Okay, we'll move on to the topic. Uh, thank you for coming back. We'll move on to the topic by to this level of service options playground maintenance.
Thank you Chair. So for the the next two items, uh, Miss Way is here to present these. And this is to just obtain some information on whether we'd like to send these brought forward through the regular budget process and uh through an O B C. Pass it along to this way.
Thank you, C L Classic, through Chief Community this evening. In August, council reviewed the draft parks and sports field, the level of service support. Um, and directed, uh, directed information on a few areas. One of them specifically was to increase the playground maintenance that occurs operationally. We have prepared three options for this evening. Uh, the first option would be to add two full time. Parks labors. Parks labors are different from our operators in that operators can actually operate machinery. For example, our riding mowers, the the drag, with the ball diamond, they're only. Uh, these individuals in option one are labors only, which means they cannot operate, but they can whip and they can um use our hand mowers. Um, so for this, this one is a work proposing full time as they would also be able to be used in the winter months. To advance other areas that were described during the last iteration of this conversation uh that are kind of lagging behind our current level of service with respect to things like repeating repair or removal, fence repair, and specifically vegetation management throughout town. Option one A is essentially the exact same option as option one, however, we will be doing part-time seasonal labors only. Um, while while that's the, it's a good option because it's the cheapest option. Uh, and they will, they'll deliver the same thing. We won't advance anything additional during the winter months. So it's uh, this option, option one A. Specifically deals with playgrounds during our summer months when playgrounds are most used. Lastly, we have the Cadillac version, which would be option two. Um, this one actually gives us operators as opposed to just labor. Um, which could advance additional areas of concern related to vegetation management. Um, as we know, the arena and the parks department are one, and we interchange those employees. So it provides a little bit more additional depth. However, that would require, um, of course, if we're going to add some staff, we'll need equipment for them. Um, so that is the more expensive option of the three that have been provided this evening. So the recommending, recommended action is option one A. Keeping in mind that of course, as we continue to build out the various section of the park's level park's level of service, uh, we can always add more down the road. Um, I continue any questions at this time?
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I thank you, Miss Way, and I appreciate, you know, the the recognition. My only concern with the recommendation. Um, and I believe, I think it is mentioned here somewhere, but the the fact that it's seasonal and how long do they stay with us? The ability to one, to hire seasonal, um, and and two is, yeah, how long they're going to be with us. So my only concern. It might be the cheaper way, but is it really getting what we're looking for in regards to uh, a a higher level of service in those areas? Cause um I imagine, cause a lot of times they're students, um, and they, you know, they they can only start at a certain time. Because they're in school and then they have to end at a certain time when those parks could still be utilized, maybe um working in that area. So that's my only concern when it comes to the the current recommendation, sure, certainly, but not sure if we can achieve what we're looking for. So, yeah.
Thank you for that question. Uh, just generally a comment on that. As I think we are continuing to to flesh out what the park's level of service is in pieces so that we can fully comprehend that. So I really feel that option one A is a good option to be able to continue to build, keeping in mind that with our unionized workforce, to reverse that course is a little bit more challenging.
Got you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Comments or questions?
I'm interested in hearing C L and Essex's comments on the staff and piece for seasonal versus year round? Any thoughts?
Through the chair and members of council and I think, you know, we went back and forth on this recommendation as well, but you know, seasonals provide incremental small improvements to our parks. Um, but like uh Miss Way said, one of the things that we're doing is piecing together all of the different elements, parks, level of service, and recreation. And, you know, park or seasonal employees are easy to transition or increase or decrease or attach to other services. If we go with the permanent full time, you're you're very much invested into that because you don't want to be you want to be stable in your organization when it comes to full time staff. And that's something that you really need to have all of your pieces together in a full screen picture before you look at that. And we're just not ready to have that full picture ready yet. So seasonal employees is a I think it's a good option to make incremental improvement in this area without a major commitment or uh major implications for the rest of the organization. If if when we look at those other pieces, um, you know, once we have that whole picture, I think we're able to to look at this a little bit more comprehensively. But for the time being, I think seasonal is a good option.
Think my question would be, I'm not sure if you're honest when you said, but uh, how do we come up with this topic? Was the current level of service not being followed? Administration uh brought us information that said that the current level of service may not be followed. This, I looked at the current level of services for this, but those were pretty good. So what, 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 what made us come up with these ideas? Is it, was it, was that are, are really not being followed from your eyes?
Through the chair, uh members of council. So we brought the level of service of what we currently do. But we also addressed what the gaps and what we currently are not doing for council to be aware of, and council had directed that in a few specific items that we bring this back to council.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, and to add to that, because I I see, my thought was council, but I guess it was me that made the motion back in in whatever date that was, until August twenty seventh. And I think one of the reasons that I did that is that is one of the areas we sometimes hear um feedback uh on is our playground areas and and the climbing, and the, and the, you know, the mowing of the grass and all those different things. So this was an exercise to see, uh, you know, going to the budget. If we're interested in filling those gaps and maybe reducing some of that feedback into a more positive that what it would look like uh in our community to to provide a larger level of service. So um, and I think that's the reason for the next one as well, the sports fields as well. So um, but I do, I I think that I appreciate, uh, if I may, uh, on, I I agree, I think the the idea, but the thank you for the 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 staffing going backwards is harder than going forward. So in my mind, it it's nicer to have a couple of full time ones doing it because, but at the same time, you know, to get started and see what would be impact is one A is a more feasible option. Um and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments or questions or perhaps a a direction? Or consensus, or?
Uh, I'll move to uh the recommended action, the committee direct administration. To create an operating business case for playground maintenance option one A to be presented for council's consideration in budget twenty twenty five. And if I can uh speak to that, um you know, I I do think, you know, our playgrounds are an important asset in our community. And having, um, I mean, we also know that the expense that it takes to replace those things. So having more uh eyes on those areas, um not only just cleaning them up, but fixing things as well, I think is to our benefit. And uh, and it's not to say that our current uh staff aren't, it's just they have a lot on their plates and a lot to do. I think this is uh in the world, different areas of playground in the community. So I think this is a reasonable way to start. Um, you know, and and I think you you know, being that it's also seasonal, that these will be utilized in other areas as well. So uh, you know, I think it'll benefit us in a couple of ways. Maybe we can have that more fuller conversation at the time as to the future of the lending services area. So, thank you.
I do support it. I'll be interested to see where it starts with uh all the requests. Everybody seems to be asking for more money. So it'll be interesting to see what that looks like. Okay, no, no more comments or questions? Let's move to the vote. We need direct administration to create an operating business case for playground maintenance option one A to be presented for council consideration in budget twenty twenty five. Please vote for against. Thank you. Uh, as you know, we'll move on to the next topic, one three, enhanced level of service, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, through Chief Community this evening. Uh, this matters before you derive from uh, the same meeting, uh, where we discussed the level of service that is occurring in our sports building, sports fields, and also what's not. The track, the running track is also included within sports fields. Um, so specifically, some of the challenges were related to weeds growing within the field of play of the diamonds. Um, as well as in both the infield and outfield, the length of grass um can sometimes cause, you know, tripping hazards, things like that, not, not ideal for playing during sports. Um so just before we get into the options for uh this report, I did want to bring to uh committees of attention that we will be seeing an O B C related to um weed, weed elimination throughout town. Um, and I've ca, and I've highlighted for you here on pages one thirteen and one fourteen the locations that are included in that first push for removal of weeds from our community. Um so just if there's, if there's anything here that you would like change, um, tonight is kind of a moment that I would, I would appreciate some direction on that with respect to that, that weed, um O B C. For example, if you wanted to reduce the scope entirely and say, just do, just do the fields, I think I'd like to know that now before I prepare to bring you your sports fields O B C, uh, but of course, changes can be made then as well. So option one is simply addressing the asset challenges that we discussed at the last meeting. Um things like adding a significant amount of shale that has deteriorated over time. Um, as to the running track as well as to the infields of the ball diamonds. The bleachers and dugouts, we've been over the past three summers kind of piecemealing together some replacement and maintenance. Or they are in rough shape. So the first option is really just improving the user experience, what it looks like when people come to our community or or use those facilities. Uh, option two actually does an increase to the operation. So we would continue to kind of piecemeal the uh lifecycle of the assets that are there. Um, but really the focus would be on using staffs to enhance uh the frequency with which we're able to mow, the fre, uh, the frequency issue with which we're able to drag the track, replace the shale. Um so this option does require uh some additional operating funds for materials such as the shale. Um, it covers also the staffing costs. And then option three is combining both of those options, addressing the assets and the visual aesthetics of the space as well as increasing the um operational maintenance that occurs. I continue any questions about this?
No questions?
Good. Uh, I just have one question about, and it's a little bit because you mentioned it, but the the running track.
Sure.
Cause I know that that is an ongoing kind of issue, you know, it's, it takes a lot of maintenance. Um, has it ever been considered by by administration to look at a different surface than what is currently there? Cause I know some citizens have come forward that use it quite often. That other communities may have like rubber tires, it needs less maintenance of it. So is that something that could also potentially be looked at so to offset some of the maintenance costs? Or is that a quite a major cap? I'm I'm assuming it's a major capital uh project. I'm guessing it's probably not anything, of course, cheap because nothing is, but has administration ever considered that in their conversations?
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Yes, we have. We did look into it a number of years ago. Um cost prohibitive generally in terms of other capital uh requests. It's similar to the surface that you would see in some of our playgrounds, that recycled tire is similar. So when it does start to deteriorate, um, it does become very expensive to replace, whereas uh with the shale on the track. If we had appropriate staffing to manage the maintenance, we would not be in the situation we're in and the condition that it would be maintained more regularly and consistently.
Okay, thank you.
Um before we uh discuss a a quote on hiring extra staff, is are you convinced that we're effectively utilizing our staff uh right now?
The chair to members of council, uh, yes, the parks specifically is you know, there, there's always more work than uh there are bodies, right? And I believe that they have gone through a number of cuts over the years that that uh over the years. Um, and I think that the cracks are starting to form a little form a little bit um over a period of time when it comes to our assets. So I don't think that we have the the bodies or the manpower to to fulfill what I think what the expectations are for the when it comes to parks, uh, being playgrounds, sports fields as well, but it's just simply not enough bodies to uh to do all the work that we want to get. So this is really about, you know, are we happy with what we're currently doing or, you know, is council's vision that we want to free these assets? If we do want to improve these types of assets, it does require additional resources.
There's no doubt that can be optimized. Be it, maybe from one job to the next, or traveling back and forth for vehicles, that sort of thing.
Yeah, through the chair, that's that is something that we could, I mean, if we're talking about efficiency, I mean, those are incremental improvements that are happening consistently, right? Um, but if we're talking about, we want to pull resources from one service to do another, that's a different conversation, another conversation that council can have as well. Uh, you know, and when we do get around, you know, when we are going to bring all of these different items forward and kind of piece this whole picture together, we are going to be proposing some of those. Um, or there's a good chance of, there are some opportunities to look at some of those when it comes to how we're doing our mowing program. Um, and maybe some areas that, uh, you know, we want streamlined a little bit more, but generally, you know, efficiency of staff, that's a process of incremental improvement. That's not something that you know, is going to enhance um service in the north.
We could, uh, please go ahead.
Um, I would actually like to uh make a motion that committee directs administration to create an operating business case for sports field level service enhancement option three. With intention for council consideration in budget twenty twenty five and and to it.
True.
Um, I spent a lot of time pondering this decision, which was an interesting one for me. And I think, and I also spent some time driving around. And I spent a lot of time thinking about how good the user groups in our community have become, especially in, let's say, the last five, ten years. We have a good groups of volunteers. We've got a huge amount of um, you know, volunteers, whether it's minor ball, whether it's, you know, all the different groups that that are coming together. And I don't feel like our assets are holding up to the efforts that are being put out by our individual community members. And yes, there's a cost associated with this, but I also really fear that without really addressing this in a wholesome manner, we're, you know, we can't just slap some paint on the bleachers that are literally disintegrating and you can't sit on one end of all that. And it's, you know, we we have to really look at some of these things in a more holistic level. Um, and I would, I would be really interested in what will we see it looks like coming forward, but I I think we have to take some action on it. Um, and and not just be trying to piecemeal um, some of this stuff together because it it seems to be quite evident that that's what we've been doing and it's not okay. So if we want to move ahead, I think we need to take a whole step. Show our user groups that we appreciate what they're doing and we see the value and that we want to be there to move this ahead. And then with the appropriate level of maintenance, those things going forward. Um, support me two thousand dollars on a annual basis for option three. Um I I think it puts us back in a better position and gives administration an opportunity to do the proper job directly. Um, go ahead.
Any comments or questions? Please.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, council chambers for this motion. I I'll be in favor of this. Like, I have the same mindset because I thinking too that my my question that I was going to ask administration is a lot of these things like the track and and the bleachers and everything. Generally, a lot are complaint based types of of scenarios, correct? So that's concerning to me. I don't want to have the complaints and that's when we go up and do it. Cause then what it does is it takes staff away from other work. So I I think this is the best move forward because we've let our assets disintegrate to a point where we're going to have to start completely replacing them, which then is going to add to more costs. And, you know, so I think that uh we have to stop the bleeding and we need to get people out there and seasonal and other things are just not cutting off the, so I think, yeah, absolutely. And I think it's also goes to it's not fair to our user groups to volunteer all that time to do things that they aren't really necessarily supposed to do, which leads to a lot of burnout. It leads a lot to resentment. And and this is important that we're providing a service to our community that's adequate, safe, um, and also demonstrates uh uh visible, we care about our community. We have other communities coming and seeing these things. And, you know, and they go home and talk about that kind of stuff, right? So I think that we owe it to uh our community to to fix up what has disintegrated. And I think this is the only way to do it. So I'll be in favor. Thank you.
Um, anyone else?
Okay, uh, well then, let's uh vote on uh the committee direct administration to create an operating business case for sports field level of service. Option three to be presented for council consideration budget twenty twenty five. Let's vote for or against. Thank you. Okay, that's uh for in favor and I want to get this. Thank you. Let's move on to
any other comments or questions on that?
I have one. I'll be interested to see if I can fit to the overall budget to, uh, that we have.
Sure, I do have.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so along with the beating that you were talking about there, I I noticed and you you, I think you asked for some possible direction. Um, one of the things that I note there, you've got a lot of places that are noted, but one area, earth park in Gerard Redmond. Um, that have not been included in the pilot project. I'm not as familiar, the earth park doesn't look as weeded area as I I that I perceive, but I do know for a factor art is very, there is no grass in any park. It is all weeds. Um, you know, and I guess I'm assuming earth probably is very similar. Um, so you know, I I think that, because it is a, it is used quite often for our soccer field, especially Gerard. Earth is more used for just general flying kites and other things, correct? I don't think that, is there any user groups that use it for any sports?
Minor ball, um, and some minor soccer do use earth. So they're little good ones. Um, just because since you're kind of, well, in my judgment, I've thought, um so so yes, it is also in coordination, however, with the Eric department, uh, very hard that we're asking for. The reason I left it out of this one is just because I I wasn't sure that we wanted to do a pilot project on on weeds, um, you know, part where we could potentially be doing some additional work to, um, and potentially eliminating. So, um it really just the scope of it will depend on what gets decided with the O B C.
Okay, so on that note then, though Gerard Redmond has, that's just, there's nothing in the foreseeable future with that area.
Nope, but if we wanted to include it, we we could. It's just not one of our more it's visible areas um compared to the others.
Okay. I think we'll leave it at that and hear where the O B C is and then, because I'm assuming that will come forward again in budget time. So I think I'll leave it at this point now here. More about the plan and the costs of it and see then. So, but I appreciate that. I just think, yeah, that's interesting. So, thank you.
Can we finish with slide three now? Thank you. Let's move on to slide four, the logistics and marketing.
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn this over to uh, Mr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, Council. Um, oh I'm sorry, um in this topic, could I hand my chairship over to the next in line, which would be Albert? Is that uh possible? Because I might want to make a consensus and the policy doesn't want to.
Sure, you saved your way to administration. Council can't do that, well, just maybe make a motion.
Through the chair, it it can be either, if you'd like to provide it for the entire giving.
Well, that's good.
True.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Okay, uh so, good evening, council. Uh, I'll be presenting on three different topics tonight, but they're really all the same topic. It's uh all related to utility uh rate changes. Uh, the first one I wanted to talk about is uh in the consultation that we've done and the feedback we've received, um the biggest thing we have heard is that residents uh would would like the increases faced and so they have time to adjust. And uh, that's what this topic is attempting to achieve. Um, in putting together this uh proposed uh incremental increase, uh, we took into account how the meters will be installed and how adding meters will affect the different uh rate structures. Uh, and that formed sort of the basis for uh putting together uh this option for uh an incremental increase. On the uh, with commercial industrial accounts, uh, we already have water meters installed. Currently, they pay a flat rate, and then if they go over fifty cubes, uh, they pay uh a a fee for the additional water over and above fifty cubes. Uh, what we're recommending is that uh the commercial and industrial uh move to the new rates uh in the beginning of uh January, when after we've passed the new water and super bylaws. Uh, and that they would move to uh the new rate system. Then, uh, for multi-residential buildings, uh currently if you have a uh apartment type building and you have a number of units in it, each unit is paying for utilities the same as if it is a whole house. Um but once we move to the uh meters uh water, what we're recommending is that the multi-residential buildings be considered more like a commercial building. And that they they have one meter for a building, they pay a flat rate for that that building and then pay for all the consumption uh that's used in that building. Uh, for them, if it's a well-maintained building, it could actually result in considerable savings because their water usage should be, should be lower. If it's a poorly maintained building, the bills could be quite high uh with water wastage. Uh, single family residential, uh through the consultation, we we also heard that we shouldn't, you know, have some parts of the town on flat and some part on metered, that, you know, we should flip everybody over all at the same time after everybody has their meters. So this uh proposal uh does that, what we're uh, what we're suggesting here is that uh, we would do a incremental increase to both multi-residential and residential uh rates. Uh, and it would bring the bill about halfway to where we think the the final bill will be. But still on flat rates until the meters are installed. Uh, and then middle of July, we would anticipate that the uh, multi-residential meters would be done, we would do those first. And then we would flip over to the new rates for multi-residential, middle of next year. Uh, and then the uh the the residential we would uh do in March twenty twenty six. Uh, because that's how long we think it could take to get the meters installed, all of the ones. We think we'd be sort of at the end of the first quarter uh twenty twenty six to get all the meters installed in there in town. Um, so I summarized uh what uh, this would would be, the the first table presents what everybody's paying currently. Uh, put forward in monthly bills, re- uh remembering that residents currently are paying bi-monthly, but the table is only monthly. Uh, so that's the first table is what people are currently paying. I've included, although waste management isn't part of this conversation, I've included that, those fees in here just so that uh, the people who are reviewing this will be looking at total bills rather than uh the the rates without the waste management in there. Uh, so then, as you go through the different tables from January twenty five, uh Uh, so then, as you go through the different tables from January twenty five, uh, January twenty twenty five to July twenty twenty five. The highlighted in yellow are the changes from the previous table. Uh, and where they would be seeing the increase. And then, uh, in July, we would get the uh. July twenty twenty five, we would be hopeful that multi-residential meters would be done. And they would still, uh, they would then in July twenty twenty five, flip over to the new rates. Uh. You'll notice that the flat rate is inclu- increasing there to forty dollars for water. Um, that's the meter co- cost. Uh, so the. Up until this point, we've been showing uh a flat rate of water of thirty, and then we've been showing an additional cost. Uh, for the meter of ten dollars a month. I've just combined those into one fee for the simplicity of this. Chart, whether or not council shows that as an additional charge on the bill. You can choose to down the road, uh, whether or not it's thirty. Which is forty dollars and meters are included. It it's however you want to present the bills. Uh. Yeah, and then for March twenty twenty six to March twenty twenty seven, that's when the new the new grades would finally kick in for. Uh, residential. And. With that, I will uh. Make any questions or suggested changes that you want to re-implementation act.
Another consensus that I wanted to make, so I'll hand it over to you now. About that kind of fundamental issue I wanted to address, and I think this is appropriate time to address it, and that's uh. Give some consideration to. This consensus, seek consensus to remove the impact of raising funds for underground infrastructure repairs through this utility fee increase. Until such time as a detailed plan of the condition assessment of the underground bank exists. So, uh. We. Uh, started uh last budget, a two hundred thousand dollars per year, um. Uh, program to assess the condition of underground pipes in our two thousand twenty four budget. And uh. By uh the words of administration in that package and the information they gave us, that program will give us results for at least two years. Um, to start raising money now. Would mean we're raising significant funds for our project. Without uh really a detailed plan. All we have for a plan for the underground pipes is just a listing of how many kilometers of pipe and the age of the pipes. We don't have a listing of the condition of the underground pipes. My analogy would be like if you're a forester or timber company and you go to the uh. Management and you want to ask for money to build a bridge and say, Taylor, where's your detailed plan? They would want a detailed plan and. The details involved in that uh in that project. Um. So, this uh could uh potentially knock off uh twenty to thirty dollars per month for the cost of the utility fee. Uh, increase. And it's just a delay until uh we get that detailed condition of condition assessment. Remember, the information we were given was two hundred thousand dollars a year. For um. For seven years to do a condition assessment of the underground. Underground pipes. And I think it's prudent that uh, but if you were in business, you would have a detailed plan. With that kind of information before you raise money. Especially considering that we've already started to raise money with the uh. Uh, natural enhancement upgrades that have given us five million dollars. So, until we get this information, we do have a sizable chunk of change. That could help with any contingency that we have for a couple of years, and this could help spread out the increase uh. For the some of the folks in town. For another uh another few years until we get that condition assessment. And that condition assessment might show surprising results, maybe our room doesn't like uh. It's where their, you know, their pipes are built on swamps and they're really deteriorate bad. Maybe our pipes aren't as bad. But we don't, we get that sort of condition system. That's why we said yes, with the two hundred thousand dollars per year. So I urge you to give some consideration of that thought. Thanks.
You, Councilor Taylor, uh, we see the motion where we.
Yeah. Councilor Taylor, can you uh kindly repeat your motion?
Sure.
What you're looking to how, but uh that committee seek consensus.
Not a consensus, uh, uh.
That's right.
Seek consensus to remove the impact of raising funds.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The seek consensus to remove the impact of raising funds. For underground infrastructure repairs. Through this utility fee increase. Until such time as a detailed plan. With a condition assessment. Of the underground pipes. Exists. Just a couple of words. No, just rationale.
Uh, I I had a couple of people in.
Sure.
Um, okay, sort of your intent, I think.
Sure. One piece of clarity, though, I want to make, that council should understand. When we say detail plan, we're talking about. How we, how we roll this out and which ones, really which pipes are going first and on what basis are we prioritizing. You know, when we're looking at a twenty year timeline, what council should be aware of. Just all the pipes are probably need to be done, right? All the pipes we're looking at, we told you need to be done. You know, we we have to be very deliberate with how we spend that money, but that's a yearly. That's a yearly process, that's a process of how we prioritize based on risk, based on condition, um. That's primarily a administrative exercise, so. You know, which pipes we do first. They both need to get done. At the end of the day, um, so. You know, my my concern is delaying this. We've already, knowing we delayed. Funding of this infrastructure for a very long period of time, so this is a a significant risk. My recommendation is that we move forward with the information we have because we actually. Town and Hinton has. Good information for us to base a decision on and for and as we get these conditions, as we determine. Um, and get more or better information, then we refine our plan and we go forward, but we know the direction is up. So delaying everything for. You know, until we can analyze, you know. Every piece of information or we're going to be delaying significantly. So that's that's my concern with the approach. Um, you know, I think we should look at it a little bit more, let's leave it a little bit more highly level first, refine as we go.
You see, uh.
Um, yeah, I just, uh. Lots of these things is depends how you view it. Um, what Councilor Taylor is saying, when look when viewing this as a twenty year project. Is sort of correct, because what we've built into the model is. Uh, we're paying off the sewer improvements that are happening to at the Mondi site. Over five years. And then at the end of the five years, we will, we would then. Utilize the increase to start again paying for water and sewer pipe replacements. So what we're essentially doing, though, is pausing our water and sewer pipe replacements. We completed two projects in the last two years. Uh, chances are, we should be doing a project a year, every year, continuing uh improvement on those pipes. But since this has come up, what's built into the plan is pausing those water and sewer projects. For a five-year period until the Mondi stuff is paid off and and operational. And then by then, we will have this data, we will have some good plans, and we'll hopefully use targeting money to do the right projects first. Uh, knowing that we're letting five years slip. In which time we should have actually been doing projects. So this plan is actually. Uh, delaying our asset, uh, instead of advancing our assets.
Okay, thank you for that, your question, what part, Councilor Taylor?
Oh, um, yeah, a couple of things. Well, we agreed to uh take on this expense, um. With the utility fee increase. Therefore, to do two major projects at once, one to water treatment plant and two surveying and through underground infrastructure. We have learned of our A of magnitude of this. And I'm not sure that we were aware of, uh, that we remembered totally the uh two hundred thousand dollars to do the underground uh. Uh, assessment and run. The little, uh, you know, assess the condition of the pipes to see what kind of condition we're all helpful have of all this information you're talking about was kilometers of pipe. And that's, so that's only information I see. Longers of pipe and age of pipe, and I don't think that's significant. That's sufficient enough to start up. The um, uh, a large increase in uh funding until we can get some information, two years' time on the condition of. That's just. That's, so we didn't have the information we needed. During utility grade discussions, we didn't have that kind of information during the utility rate discussions, understand really totally. I don't, I. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor, Councilor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't be in favor of this, and the the reason being is because. We're either don't increase it now, we get more information, and then we hit them again. With a larger one, you know, because now we have the information that we have to fix or whatever. So I. I think a gradual start is great. Who knows that what what the future brings when we get more information, but delaying it even further. To build that capital for such an essential asset. Um, and all I can think of, you know, and I'm not saying, I I mean, but we all saw the. Drastic pictures that we saw of some of the pipes already that we have in our community upgrade. Um, I'm guessing, I I don't, I I mean, but they are probably of same age in the wrong areas that. We've got areas that need to be taken care of, you know, so. Um, I can't be in favor of this, I I just can't delay it any further, and I just believe it's it's going to. It's going to put more more uh impacts on this in the community in the later days, that's all, so. That's what I thought.
Um, for myself, I appreciate the intent of the the motion to try and. Phase in the costs, it's not as impactful all at once. Uh, we, I do understand, and as I said, I appreciate that. But I unfortunately I can't support it, though. Uh, I think it's important that we start. Uh, that we start uh collecting funds to help. Pay for the infrastructure replacement that we all know is coming. Uh, in in administration has reported to us regularly. For as long as I've been on the council about the infrastructure, underground infrastructure deficit that we have. Uh, I think we all know that it exists. And I think it's great that we've got some tools now so that we can. Actually get a visual representation of what that deficit looks like. But I think we do need to be prepared for it, and I think it's important to to get off on the right foot when we kind of start saving to. Start mediating that as quickly as possible. With that, is anyone else who'd like to speak to the motion? Or listen?
Thank you, as good as the chairman committee. I do will not be in favor or voting in favor of this motion. Uh, I don't need a more detailed condition assessment to know that we produce more water than we are using. And that our system leaks like crazy. Uh, I know that when we get to meter. Water in our community, we're going to have lots of data and information to find out where those leaks are. We're going to start sealing up that system. If we don't start putting away the money to do that capital work. We won't be able to do it in time. We're not going to be reducing our water load. We're not going to be reducing our costs in the long term, and we're not going to be. Setting ourselves up for success with the water treatment plan down the line, so I can't vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Looking at what is made that we're not, uh, we haven't started to collect money for this. We've been collecting uh capital enhancement fees for a number of years, so we haven't been collecting money for it. And, uh, no, I'm just not in favor of speculatively increasing the things, uh, I don't have a detailed plan. Now I think it will help us spread out the cost of things.
Maybe, what else? Anyone else then who called to question? The motion that council seek consensus through the. For underground infrastructure repairs through this utility fee increase. Until such time as a detailed plan with a condition assessment of the underground pipes exists. Maybe. Where that is defeated for one with Councilor Taylor for, and the rest of committee events. Mr. Taylor, would you like to resume the chair?
Uh, sure. Right, um, any other questions or comments on the um? Um. Yeah, thank you. I'd like to move the recommended action, the committee reach consensus to direct administration. To draft water and sewer bylaws with the provisions to phase in new utility rates as presented. And if I can just quickly uh speak to it, um, I appreciate administration, um, listening to our citizens. Uh, and their needs and, uh, you know, uh, uh, and and doing a a phased in approach. Uh, I I appreciate the planning. Around it and the time it took to put this together, so I think it's reasonable. I think it's, uh. Taking a bit of a load off of our citizens in the in the short term. But it's also putting away money for the inevitable capital projects that are coming forward, and I agree with you. Uh, Marinis in that, you know, we've we've identified some leaks, but we know there's more and we're going to find that out, so. Thank you.
You're the chair.
Oh, shit. And you can keep it, keep it to the top. Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, I have a, I have a concern, and my concern is that we're giving the business people their increase from one year. I know they already have uh meters and whatnot, but still they're getting, residents are getting a resource like a couple of years. The businesses, I think they're free server. Probably one year. Um, so they've heard that concern, although we need.
Well, we started here. Uh, so as I see it with the with the commercial and the administration can correct me, as I'm I'm reading this incorrectly, but. The proposal here is to have commercial go directly to the metered rates. So that increases is estimated, but as I understand, a number of our businesses use almost no water in this community, so going to meters is going to repeat. Decrease there. Or or may decrease their pounds, and some businesses use a lot of water, and I expect them to have a very drastic uh change in their building. Um, but administration, is that not the case here? They'd be moving directly to metered? The the metered rates right away?
Uh, seriously? Sure, let's give the chair to the council. Uh, yes, the what we're suggesting is that. The new rates take a take effect for commercial and industrial when. The bylaws are passed, so that'd be January, so you know, we have been talking about it for over half a year, so it's not like it's. Uh, a complete surprise. It has to be moved to at at some point in time, and. So the values I've calculated in these charts are based on a commercial or industrial user using fifteen cubes of water. So for a small store, they might be nowhere near fifteen cubes. They their bill could be substantially less than this. Um, but a car wash will be, or a hotel will be substantially more. Um, it it all comes down to how much water you use and, uh. And right now, they're they're playing pot rate, and then if they go over fifty cubes. Uh, they pay an additional charge. So some of the businesses that are very, very high volume users are already seeing fairly large bills. Um. But it those bills will essentially go up by fifty cubes.
Oh, yeah, uh. I'm I'm good. I'm glad to to hear that for some businesses that that are low water users, this is actually going to be, uh, maybe a net decrease for them, so. Uh, happy to hear that and, uh. maybe a net decrease for them, so uh happy to hear that, and the car washes and hotels bring points, you know, the the retail shop selling clothing shouldn't be paying the same amount as water as a car wash or a hotel, that sounds absurd to me, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm listening, uh counselor Haas.
Yeah, sorry I didn't ask this earlier, but um when it comes to the meters, because one of the questions that was come to from the community is who's installing them and whose cost that is, so can you speak to that a little bit about, you know, moving forward with meters, how how is that gonna work, is it on the homework to get them installed, is it the town? But can you speak that just a little bit in regards to this?
Yeah, sure, so the the question of who's paying for the meter? Uh the answer is every dollar we spend is coming from the residents one way or another, so the answer is the residents are paying for the meter, that it's just we're not planning to charge them a big amount that they don't have to come up with a thousand or two thousand or three thousand dollars to pay for a meter. No, we're working those costs into the rates as a project. Uh you will have a CPP in front of you for a water meter project at budget time. And the the plan is that we will either do it as a big project, the town will pay for it, everyone gets a meter. Or it's a service where a company comes in, they install the meters, and that's where the ten dollar a month uh estimate came from, we actually think once council looks at the options, you'll probably choose to do it as a project, because I I think it will be a less expensive than the meter as a service. Uh we're taking on more risk uh because when meters approach out of warranty, then it becomes our risk, but those options will come to council as we do that project, but the cost of the meters are built into these rates, which is why today I showed it as a forty dollar flat rate instead of as a separate charge. Uh one way or another, it's in the cost of the bills.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, counselor Haas, many, who else? Mister Taylor?
Right, um I guess I have a question for council, um. You know, the biggest thing I saw when I read the survey, probably wasn't what you saw, but the biggest thing I saw was that uh two hundred and fifty seven people went on in favor of having water meters and a hundred and twenty seven were in favor of having water meters, so the number of citizens that were opposed was two to one. Just um just that's kind of opposite to what people I was talking to were telling me when I was talking to them, a lot of people I were talking to, they were saying that they think water meters is a good thing. So anything about explanation for that difference in the survey versus what uh people were telling me?
Oh, yeah, I'll 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 take the the question, just need to uh uh get the chart chart out here. So we didn't actually ask a question on whether people want a water meter or not. Um what we asked was, how would you like your water wastewater bill to be structured between fixed base fee and a variable consumption fee? That that's the question we actually asked, and you see a lot of people online very upset at a power bill when most of their bill is line charges instead of consumption charges. And that issue was where this question was aimed at, because as a town, we need to collect so much money a year to pay for water and wastewater services. We need to collect that money from the residents yearly. But the question is, how do you divide that when when you have a large volume water user? And a very low volume water user, the plant still needs to be there, and the people need to be there, and every the only variable in cost we really add is a little bit of electricity and a little bit of chemical. But the cost to run the plant is the cost to run the plant. And so this question was aimed at, what do you think is fair? It's not really fair that you know, someone who uses hardly any water pays hardly anything, because they still need water coming to their house. So they need to pay a significant portion because water's coming to them. But on the same side, someone who's using a lot of water should pay more, because they're using more of the system. So the question more was around, how much of the bills do you think should be fixed where everybody pays the same? And how much should be variable where the higher user pays more? And if you actually add up the people who thought it should be a hundred percent variable and the ones that thought it should be either, you know, forty or fifty percent variable, it's actually gets a lot closer to a fifty fifty split.
Mister Taylor, does that count, or is that?
I'm having difficulty with the chart at the top, picking uh in the survey at one thirty eight. Should residential developments be required to have water meters installed, question mark? Yes, one twenty seven, no, not in favor of water meters, so did you ask that question, or where did you get those numbers from? That seems to be what you ask those questions.
Oh, you're referring to, that's how page one was in the, yeah, should residential developments be required in order to hear this?
Yeah, maybe I don't understand the question properly.
Uh through the chair to uh the council committee, yes, we did uh that question. What I think people took it the way you 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 did, but we actually were leaning, should new developments have to put in themselves? Is what we were aiming at with that question, so if someone was building a brand new subdivision, should they have to have the cost of installing all the meters as part of their construction? Uh that's really what we were getting at with that question, but people took that as, do I want a water meter, yes or no? Um and and so there is a little bit of a discrepancy on that question.
Right.
Good, you get counselor Taylor, did you follow?
No.
Many?
We only have one more if I could. Utility bill, I'm for a house that's rented, does that have to be in the name of the person that owns the house? Or can it be in the name of the person that rents the house, because there's communities that and I've had that expressed as a concern to me that it should be an unable person that rented the house, necessary, we could have the posses or whatnot, or the trends of the nature of homeowners.
Just before we go to administration, maybe we could explain why we chose to choose to do it, as well?
You know, our committee, um we do it the way we do because we're wanting to ensure that we follow legislation through the uh upper utilities commission as well as the municipal government act. If we choose to build a tenant of a rental property, then we have severed our relationship with property owner, and we one hundred percent lose our ability to transfer any outstanding utility, it counts to taxes. So that is why we are very firm in creating the agreements only with the property owner. We do do an extra step and provide a second email copy to a tenant, we do that as a courtesy service. One of these things that has evolved over time, but we will always keep the utility in the landowner's name, so that we have that mechanism in the event that the utilities go into years.
Mister Taylor?
So when this question came to me yesterday, I've already asked staff today to start doing a a little bit of gathering of what other communities do, so I'll I'll bring some additional information on this topic back to council. Um but the other part of this is with the new bylaw, we want to make, we wanted to not be going out and turning people's water off, and then when they pay their bill, run out, turn it back on again, and uh that that chasing becomes not a not very fun game of turning people's water on and off, so uh what we were proposing by continuing to not allow it in the renter's name, then it just moves to taxes, but we don't ever get to the point where we turn people's water off. Um I think that some of the communities that allow it to uh renters to open accounts, they're still in the business of turning people's water off uh as the method of dealing with nonpayment. Um so it's it's a whole nother topic and uh council will have a chance to discuss that when we bring our bylaws back.
Nothing further? Called question, the motion that committee seek consensus, reach consensus to direct administration to draft water and sewer bylaws with provisions in place. I gotta read it online, sorry.
I'll make a note.
The committee reached consensus to direct administration to draft water and sewer bylaws with provisions to phase in new utility rates as presented. Many?
In favor?
And it's carried you down to sleep. Is there anything further in this conference before we move on? Okay, so nothing, we'll turn the chair around, whoever else, your camera.
You guys wanna do that?
Right, let's move on to uh by five water meters for mobile home parks, thank you.
All right. Okay, uh council, this is the uh second agenda item uh related to are you filling uh rate changes, uh so this issue came up as part of our evaluation. Uh you heard one lady uh speak today at the middle of council on this issue, so when we go to install meters for a mobile home park, we can install one meter in a vault, in a property line and get the entire volume of water that is going into uh in into a mobile home park, and there's also some, there may be a couple multi-residential uh units. Because of how they're built, it would make sense to do that, whatever you decide here would make sense to do for them as well, so when we write the bylaw, in some cases, this will also apply to uh unique multi-residential uh where there's multiple, multiple buildings on one property. Um so when you uh dealt with taxes on this same sort of similar issue, you chose to continue to do uh individual tax bills uh on the residential uh uh mobile homeowners, and so I'm assuming the council will want to do something similar, but we thought we should ask so that we know how to draft this, so I still think doing the one meter on property line is necessary no matter what, because if there's significant leakage in the infrastructure on the property, you want to be able to capture that water. Uh but then, do you want to also have meters installed in the individual units? If we do it that way, then every unit will have to also pay a flat rate. Uh so they'll pay, every mobile home will pay the forty dollars for water and the ten dollars for sewer, plus whatever their consumptions is. Just like every other house, house in town. Uh if you do it for an entire property, they would only pay the flat rate once, and then they would just pay the entire consumption for the entire property, and so if there was a hundred units, that's a quite a bit of month per month difference that they're going to be paying, because they want the meters and because they want the billing to go to those individual units. However, we have uh uh you know, administration not only talked to the lady that came and talked tonight, but we also talked to uh one of the other large uh manufacturer home property owners in town, and it was their preference as well that we put individual meters into the 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 mobile homes. Uh so all, it seems that is the property owner's preference, is quite a bit more administrative work for administration to have to you know, deal with any meter problems and go into the mobile homes and uh I mean, it's no different than anywhere else in town, but there's just a lot more, the 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 number, the number is higher. Uh and and so it's more bills, more, but we're also getting the revenue for doing that work. Um so that's the issue, and I forward to hearing council's opinion.
Uh I have a question, so uh I think I'm in favor of having the individual meters as well as the uh uh main meter that's that's going to service the park. In the event that the data that's being collected shows that there's a significant difference between what's being used in individual homes compared to what's coming into the park, which would show significant leak or multiple leaks. Can the town use that data to force the chairman of parks to find and fix those needs?
Go ahead. Uh so through the chair to all of council, so we will draft the uh bylaws in that manner, and hopefully you approve it, what I was envisioning is that you know, on a monthly basis, we would compare all the water going into a park versus all the water that got billed for a park. And if there is a considerable difference, send the owner a difference for the bill, so they they may, in addition of each unit getting billed, the water that went through the meter to the property that didn't get billed, the owner will also get a bill. Um for that leakage, which will encourage them to fix their infrastructure. Um I will probably build build into the bylaws, you know, some type of tolerance threshold, say five percent. That, you know, if if they're within five percent, we don't send a bill. Uh because the, you know, the accuracy typically water bylaws uh the, you know, if someone challenges their meter and you send it up for testing, it's within three percent, it's considered accurate. Uh so that's why I would choose some conservative number that you could do the additional one.
Thank you, your follow up, mister chair. Uh it's great, I appreciate that explanation, I'm concerned that there has to be something built in to make them care. Because if we're just metering the individual homeowners, the park owner isn't likely to care for this, we expect, yeah, if there's some uh if there's a bill going to them, the difference between what the individual owners use and what's going into the park, that is pretty strong incentivization to try and find those leaks and get them fixed, so thank you for that, mister chair.
Cool, I'm in charge, you're in answer. Um so I just want to clarify, if we go with recommended action, then we need a building for the mobile home would be the same as the residential.
Here's a check, yes, that is correct, it'd be considered a residential connection.
I I had a session, but this time I should quit it. I was originally thinking that um one bill would be better, but really not liking the thought of lack of maintenance then falling onto the individual homeowner, that made me really uncomfortable, um because I I think that that's what could be realistic here, um so and the the workload is one thing, but now having you explain that each individual site is now going to be paying a forty dollars, that is an additional revenue which can offset some of that administrative workload, et cetera, which um so it'd be carrying those things, I think, I and 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 of this, but it's a it's been a tough one. I but I do think there just needs to be that incentivization for the maintenance of those water mains and those main areas, I think that's really key for me um to make sure that they're not holding up their end of bargain as far as what we need to maintain with the infrastructure of the parks to operate.
Um go ahead. Yeah, the one other thing to consider with this issue is, you know, just looking at fairness. Um if you have one mobile homeowner who is very diligent and look, you know, and has a very uh you know, no leaks and they're very diligent with their water, they have the ability to keep their bill low under this scenario. Meanwhile, if they have a neighbor who doesn't do any maintenance, all the toilets are leaking, the the Meanwhile, if they have a neighbor who doesn't do any maintenance, all the toilets are leaking, the the uh the water usage is very, very high. Well, then the property owner under the other scenario would have to take that very high bill and spread it amongst everybody because he doesn't know who. Who that is and you would you you could have a very high water bill. For the property that then gets divided amongst everybody and you have someone who's very diligent and very careful with water. Suffering a high, high bill and no, no ability to reduce it.
Thanks. Do we have a recommended action? Let somebody put something forward? Does anybody want to put something forward?
That committee reached consensus to direct administration to draft water and sewer bylaws with provisions for one water meter. Installed on each mobile home park water line, plus water meters installed at individual mobile homes within. Mobile home parks. I don't think I need to speak to Mr. Chair, anything you've kind of spoken to or anything?
Perfect. I know, um that case, let's say you just read it, so we'll do that again. Let's vote for or against, thank you. That's unanimous. Anybody else have anything to say on the topic of water meters? Well, that's we've all worked through information items, utility rate survey results. Is there anything more to say on that? Very much. Oh, correct.
I will move to the committee uh accept, accept from me, report for information.
Okay. Anybody want to speak to that?
Oh, sorry. I'm only.
Yeah. Uh okay.
Better change the move.
Uh we're gonna vote on the capital project one as well, or are you gonna, that's what we're gonna change?
No, are you removing that? Okay, she's removing the yeah.
You know, hey. Well, not not on mine. Yours. There is.
No. The old one again.
I just have the old one. Okay, let's go on. I think we'll accept the utility rate uh survey results for information for or against please, thank you. Is there one more person to vote? Am I close?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Let's move on to capital projects financial fees, thank you.
The council race on time.
Seeing out to the chair, I don't believe there's anything else to add unless there are any questions.
Just give the questions.
Um. I'll answer questions on this topic? Okay, so if anyone wants to accept this for information? Get your first.
Uh I'd like to move that we accept. Twenty twenty four capital project sales report for information.
Okay. Okay, uh any, no further questions? So let's uh vote for or against uh accepting this for information, thank you. We're missing one. There we go, that's unanimous. Yeah, okay, so now anything more on that topic? Let's move on to reporting, council reports, we'll start with uh. Uh Kristen.
Uh so yesterday we met with Minister Nixon uh here in the council chambers, for those of you who arrived to attend. Uh it was a pretty standard uh minister conversation, uh. You know, a lot of non-committal words and uh topic or discussions on topics that are of interest to us. Uh but it was ultimately to announce uh or on on the heels of the announcement for the. Projects, the twenty five seniors units that are going in or we can lands uh that we give up. By the line for, we also were able to bring up the topic of homelessness and homeless encampment. Uh with his office and we've been directed to some. Uh another ministry to have some discussions on that. That's all I have for council this week, thank you.
Sure. Uh nothing important this time. Hold on. Um yeah, um. The uh one of the values of the discussion that we had with Minister Nixon in my mind was the homelessness discussion that we had and I thought that. You know, occasionally when we talk about things informally, that some good ideas come and I thought that we came up with ideas during the the session, so. That'd be a moment that we might continue. Um okay, uh CEO.
Uh through the chairman of council, uh nothing to report, we have included our action pending this. Um. We will be updating this in the next uh few days as well, so the next iteration, you see uh what some of these items will be taken off of this, but. There's any questions? Yeah, I can answer.
Anybody have questions uh for the two? Yeah, I have a question on uh to the CEO, um. With respect to the questions that help ask, she asked three questions. Can we get the answer to those questions?
Through the chair, I don't have those answers, but.
No, not today, but.
Oh, by of course, yeah.
Yeah, because three questions are right.
Um yeah, I can believe I.
Who have the, who approved the dismantling accounts? Wherever the material is taken, especially the materials that I can pick uh valued and uh. Can't remember what the, oh. Well, I guess there's only two questions.
Yes, yeah, so I'll I'll follow up and I'll connect and provide that to you.
Um okay, that we go to, we have a close session today. Okay, now I need a motion to end. Thank you, we're in a close. All right, let's vote a little bit close.
You'll vote it, sir?
We vote for or against joining the votes? Okay, we're in a spirit of votes. Thank you.